I'd like to call the meeting to order.
I was just gonna move that one.
We're at the Marshalltown City Council in the City Hall Council Chambers, 10 West State Street, February 4th, 2019, and we're at noon hour. Notice to the public, the mayor and the city council welcome comment from the public during the discussion of any of the agenda items. You are required to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit the time used to present your remarks to three minutes or less in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council and not to any councilor specifically. It is at the discretion of the mayor and the council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. To call the meeting to order and ask if you're here to please rise and do the pleasurable allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd call roll, please.
Yes, Cahill? Here. Goudy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom is absent. Lamer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Wierin?
Here.
She's there.
The first item would be a discuss -- all these are discussion items, and the first one would be the budget fiscal year 2020 road use tax fund.
Good afternoon, Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So, road use tax, that is a special revenue. The funds are generated through the collection of vehicle registrations and gas taxes that are paid at the pump. It is in a portion among cities based on the latest federal census. The expenses for this fund are to be used for construction and maintenance of public streets, which includes congruent, stormwater, and sewer lines, sidewalks, et cetera. So, you'd open the budget comparison report? So, the top row is the revenues that we are projecting. So, for fiscal year 19, we are projecting $3.5 million, and fiscal year 20, we are projecting $3.4 million. The reason for this is because the Iowa Department of Transportation is projecting a lower rate, so we adjusted for that. Many of the bigger items that you see that are changing quite significantly are because of the capital improvement plan. So, Jessica, if you would scroll down to...
You should be able to tap down on your keyboard there.
Can I?
You should be able to.
Okay, got it. The first one I wanted to bring your attention to is the 110-2010-5352, the contract for tree removal. We did increase that by $80,000. This is due from the tornado, so FEMA will reimburse us to cut the trees at the ground level. We still need to remove the stumps, so that is what that $80,000 is for. Down here, which is 110-2010-5750, other capital equipment greater than $5,000. The $180,000 is made up of a 3/4 ton pickup for $32,000 and a dump truck for $148,000. Moving on down to sidewalks, which is 110-211-5351. That is for the annual sidewalk for ADA that we're projecting.
Can we ask a question at any time? Is it appropriate?
Yes, thank you, Diana. I had a question from a constituent who asked if any of the sidewalk work, maybe things that were damaged through the tornado, if any of that was going to be covered in our budget, or is that the homeowner's responsibility?
That is the homeowner's responsibility. We did investigate this avenue with FEMA as to whether or not we could, you know, potentially make a project out of this, and because the city is not responsible for the maintenance and condition of the sidewalk in private neighborhoods or downtown, we were unable to then sort of take on that responsibility to have a project with FEMA. And so, at this point, any damaged sidewalks are still the responsibility of the property owner.
Thank you. So, next, under street lighting, 110-2030-5481. We did bump that up by $30,000 just based on where it's this -- where it's at this fiscal year and then for next fiscal year, so that's why that's an increase there. The next big item is 110-2060-5342 for $1.5 million. What makes this up is the wayfinding for $50,000, a bridge repair for $30,000, railroad for $1 million, the Melissa Glenda connection for $100,000, a server for $35,000, and can't Something else for $340,000. It's in your capital improvement plan if you want to refer back to that. So, that's a pretty significant increase, so I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Which one was that?
It is the 110-2060-5342. Are you okay? Do you have another question?
Got it.
Under street cleaning, for fiscal year 20, we are putting in $200,000 for a street And then if you go to the transfers, so 110-9,7500-001, transfer to the general fund. So, what this is, is we pay our public works employees out of the general fund 001. We then reimburse that with road use tax for the gross amount of their wages. This also includes a small percentage for the HR director, finance director, and city administrator.
I have a question on that one, please.
Sure.
The year before Jessica came, we passed a resolution and capped that transfer to There's a resolution on file. If you guys remember, we capped that at $900,000 at the transfer, so is it legal for us to can -- if we approve this budget, is that resolution no longer in effect, or do we have to go back and rescind that resolution so you can transfer more than the $900,000 out?
I will need to find that resolution and determine what it says. If it was for just a one fiscal year period, then that would be -- it would be done, but if it's something that had ongoing authority, then we would need to review that, yes.
Okay. I think it was three years ago. It was $800,000, and we raised it to $900,000. It was $800,000 for like five or six years.
I thought last year during budget season, you brought that up, and I thought we went back and looked at it, and we were okay, because, you know, even for FY '19, we have $1.2 million being transferred.
I looked at that, and I thought, did we really do this right?
Okay, well, we'll check into it.
Okay, thanks.
So, this shows the entitled -- entire total for the year. So, coming into June 30th, we had about $4.5 million in fund balance, and you can see that for FY '19, we're taking a reduction of $63,000, and for FY '20, we're taking a reduction of $1.6 million. So, this will leave our fund balance at June of 2020 at about $2.8 million. Does anybody have any questions on the road use tax?
I would ask one. You mentioned that the tree stump removal, there'd be money in there for that, but that would not be till July. Would that be fair to say?
Right.
So, the trees would be removed here hopefully soon, then they would come back in July and start on the stumps?
Well, just due to the quantity, we'll have to put that out to bid separately because of our own purchasing policy, and so we did not contract with the current tree vendors to do any of the stump removals. So, yep, so it'll basically in June is when we can get out a bid. I'm gonna guess it's gonna require a contract and probably a performance bond to get it done, and so that's when we would then bring that back to you for approval, but work couldn't start until July 1st when the funds were available.
Okay.
Talking -- are we going -- you didn't you say we had to have this done by March, or did we get an extension?
So, all we have to have done by March 11th, which we do not have an extension yet, but we have a meeting next week where we'll be talking with our representative about how we go about getting that extension, but all we have to have down for that point is just the trees. The stumps are completely ours, it's a 100% city activity.
But I don't think because of the weather, we're not gonna be able to make that March 11th, are we?
Potentially. That's where I should be hearing from our tree contract holders here in the next few weeks as to whether or not they think it's feasible. I would agree with you that it's probably not gonna be feasible, but we have to request an extension anyways also for some other activities that we still have ongoing in our emergency work.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from the public? If not, we'll move to number two, budget fiscal year 2020, the enterprise funds.
Okay, the enterprise funds are activities that run like a business since fees are charged to offset the cost. So, I kind of outlined for you what the different funds are, so I'd like to go to the cash sheet. So, again, under all these funds, if we had a capital improvement plan, they're already put into these funds. Kind of wanted to focus on the fund balances since there's not a lot of difference in the activity from year to year. So, the water pollution control fund, these are the expenses for the water pollution control plant. The revenue actually sits down in 611, so you can see off to the side, if you net those two, the fund balance would be $11.6 million at the end of fiscal year 20. The capital reserve fund, this is $1 million, and it's about 15% of the expenses in 611. This is just for cash flow purposes. In 616 and 617, well, 616, the sanitary sewer rehab project, that includes the manhole project, and we are going to use state revolving funds for that. We've talked about that before. The ones that are -- start out with tornado, so those are expenses that we incurred due to the tornado. We haven't been reimbursed for them yet. Once we do, then we can put a revenue number in there, and they should zero out. If they're disqualified from FEMA, then we'll have to put them back into their regular expense fund, so that's why they're negative. The transit operations, we are going to levy what we are expecting to expense less the revenues, so whatever it takes us to make us whole in fiscal year 20, that's what we are gonna levy. And I, as I indicated on my memo, that it would be $316,540. And you will notice that there is a fund balance of $48,000 at the end of 2020 that we're projecting. We'd like to keep that there for emergency repairs of buses since it can be pretty pricey. We did the same thing last year, so just keeping that fund balance in there. The next two, the storm sewer utility and then the GO bond funds for that. Again, if you net those two together, we have enough money to cover that deficit. Composting facility, we generate that through fees. For fiscal year 19, we did buy a piece of equipment, so that's why it dropped so much this year. And then we have the Parks and Rec concession enterprise, so this is out at the Aquatic Center. We are making small gains to pull off that deficit. Does anyone have any questions on these items?
Just we're going to, we're gonna take a look at that one fund with a maybe a rate adjustment, aren't we?
So, just to remind all of you of kind of with the wastewater rates and the stormwater rates, we do not have anything that is set to go into effect at all in calendar year 2019. The last wastewater rate increase was January 1st, 2018, and it was it, was it July 1st of 2018 or July 1st of 2017 on stormwater? So, we do need to do studies of those with staff time limited here in the tornado aftermath and kind of as we can figure out where we're at with FEMA, we will probably be putting out a request for proposal to secure some, affirm to do those rate studies and bring those back to you at some point, but that has not been the highest priority here in the, in the short term.
No. I was talking about the one for the landfill where we had all the extra cash in. We were gonna take a look and make sure that we weren't charging too much.
Yeah, correct. That's still going to be done before July 1st, but that was part of the general fund budget. It's not an enterprise fund, so, but yes, we'll do that before July 1st.
Okay, thank you.
So, when we actually put the budget pages together, then we also include Marshalltown Water Works in our budget pages, but for this purpose, on this cash sheet, it does not include Marshalltown Water Works.
Makes you look better that way.
Any public questions? If not, oh, there is.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So, this fund balance, looks like you got about $13.8 million in fund balance there. Any way you can use that to expand the sewer system out to say Odessa Drive, to, you could annex in some properties out there that would pay some good property tax to the city?
Okay, we'll move on to number three, fiscal year 2020 Employee Benefit Fund.
Okay, these funds are levied on the property taxes, so Fund 112 is employee benefits. So, this includes the city share of IPRs, FICA, health insurance, workers' comp, unemployment, and R H S A. So, if it is part of the general fund expenses, then we transfer the money out of Fund 112, which has been levied, and move it to Fund 001. Jessica, if you'd wanna pull up the memo and scroll down with the chart. So, here's your fund balance chart. So, at 6:30, 18, we come in with $2.4 million. We have about a $194,000 surplus for this fiscal year, and then $86,000 surplus for FY '20. The surplus is due to the backfill, so we calculated the backfill is receiving the revenue. Whether we will or not, we don't know till the session's over. So, that leaves us $2.7 million in the fund balance in Employee Benefits Fund. Go ahead.
Can you explain, Diana, a little further on the backfill of what's happening there, what the trend line is and so on? I think the public would like to know. I would like to be better informed.
Well, under Governor Branstad, they were supposed to pay for the backfill. They dropped a commercial property to 90% for the rollback, and the state was supposed to make up the difference, appropriate it every year. Well, since it is an annual appropriation, they can always go back in and change that. So, last session, it was a fight to keep, to keep it. We are glad that we did get to keep it, otherwise that money would go away. So, for our general fund, it was over a quarter million, and for all of our other levies, it was a total of like $450,000.
Okay, thank you.
So, Fund 117, the police and fire retirement, this works very similar. It's charged at the Fund 001 level, our general fund, and then we levy for the money and transfer it based on what is actually needed. The emergency fund, that is a levy. The maximum is 27 cents per thousand. We do transfer all of that, whatever we levy, into the general fund, and that's already in our budget. So, do you have any questions on these funds?
I have a couple, three. First of all, this, this would contain our part-time help, right?
Benefits for our part-time people, yeah.
Did, can you quickly tell me what we did with the part-time help? How far did you raise their wage? Where's, where's our pool people? How much did we raise them so that we can at least get some kids hired this year?
I can't give you the specifics of that, but I know that we can have Jeff put together an email and send that out. I do know that the pool budget was put together, not being conservative at all, and had, I think, starting rates of $10 an hour with higher rates for those that had been employees there previously. What we did on the, on the parks side of things with our seasonal help was we increased the total budget, knowing that we were probably going to be hiring either more people at same rates or having to increase the rates, and so that's where, that's where that wants to be worked out. Brad Weave is not here currently, but we can, we can have a summary. Jeff can get a summary of that once he's returned to work.
Yeah, I know, last year it was $7 in some sense, and that's, that's just out of line. We gotta get, if we're gonna hire some kids, high school kids and stuff for part-time help, we gotta get it more than $7.40 or whatever it was last year.
So, really, the pool is the only place where we can hire individuals under 18 to work in the parks is 18 or over.
I understand that, but still, $7, and, you know, they can go a lot of places and make 10 easy.
So, the benefits that...
Do we still have, do we still have, that we'll pay for the training that the lifeguards need?
Yes, that was something that was included in that, that proposal.
Do we, are we gonna train them, or do we, are we hiring somebody to train them? Do you know?
I will have to get back to you on, on that one, so...
Okay. I just wanna make sure that when it comes time to get those people, that they aren't all gone, so we, I know they're advertising right now to try to hire them, so let's, let's get the wages so that we can have, when the pool's gonna be open, we got plenty of good Good, thank you.
Any public questions? Move on to number four, budget year 2020, scenarios, scenarios for property tax levies.
Jessica, would you bring up scenario one?
The, was that one of the whip folder ones? Or is that on the agenda?
It's on the agenda.
Oh, there we go.
So, as we discussed, the local option sales tax...
Yours came up, mine wouldn't come up at home. I couldn't bring either one of them up.
As we talked about local option sales tax a week or so ago, we suggested that we could take $390,000 that was sitting in the fund balance for property tax relief to reduce our levy, and so this is what the scenario would be. So, if you look down the lower right-hand corner, the levy would be $15.50. Our current rate is 15.28158, which has stayed the same for the last three years. So, this would be an increase of the levy by about 23 cents. So, if you could flip over, Jessica, to the memo, and scroll down to the chart. So, for option one, a $50,000 assessed house would be paying $16 more per year for property tax, and you can see for $100,000, it'd be about $33. If you didn't wanna put the $390,000 in or use it this year and save it for a later year, then the rate would go up by about 66 cents. And again, on the chart here under option two, you can see that increase would be. So, we're looking for your recommendation of what you might wanna do. If you wanted to try and get back to the same rate as before, you'd have to kick in about another $200,000.
The, the one thing to say here is that the reason the tax levy has been at $15.28 the past two years is because you have used local option sales tax fund balance to buy it down to that point in previous years. We wanted to show you what remained of that designated property tax relief amount for you to consider, you know, how, how much of a difference that would make, and as you can see, as Diana said, it's about a 23 cent difference. One of the things that Councilmember Lamer had brought up in the previous, I think, budget workshop was that we know that next year will look very different, and so we're looking at this as sort of being an incremental step where it's not in this next fiscal year where the, the pain is felt, that it would then be probably, we'd be looking at a larger increase than in fiscal year 21 due to the loss of valuation. And so, it's, neither is, is good, neither is anything that we, we want to do, but that's where we're really showing you and I would say recommending option two if you do want to, or option one if you do want to, to not be at what we fully need, but have some relief that gets us kind of in a middle ground scenario.
What will that leave us for a balance in the loss fund then? You know?
So, I can bring that up. So, it's gonna, it's gonna leave cash in lost, but it won't leave anything in, it'll leave basically $3,000, almost $4,000 in the loss that is designated for property tax relief, and so that's the, so that's where our designations are. You'll still have funds in the council-designated lost and the capital project lost. As you'll recall, with the election, there is no longer funding being set aside in the capital, so when, when we have that project where we need to come forward and say, this is the time where we think you should put this money towards that, then that's really going to take up that, and then the council designated does keep replenishing itself each year with the, with the 22%. And so, you can see with the council-designated, Diana's got it projected here, looking at about $943,000 at the end of this current fiscal year, and then with what we've discussed so far, using, it would grow to $1.5 million for next year. I will say that I do think, depending on how, how big of a hurt things look in the gen, like in the general fund for next year, that I do see us coming to you and saying, can we use some of the council-designated local option sales tax to get us through this rough period, being one of those options that we would have out there to propose.
So, if we, if we do option one, do we still have the $943,000 balance?
Correct.
Because I'm, I'm really worried about what we're gonna get, what's gonna show up next year with the tornado funds, and I wanna make sure that we aren't, we've got some cash to work with.
Yes, so you'll still have the council-designated cash to work with, yes.
Okay, you're...
That's if we take that $100,000, if we do half of it and take it down to a dime or something, add another $100,000 to the $390,000, that'd still leave us $843,000 in there?
Okay, you're in the wrong column, because the $390,000 is the property tax...
He's saying using some of the council-designated to additionally buy down more, so, yeah, so you're, you're correct. If you wanted to take... If you wanted to take, it would really be kind of in, it wouldn't really be in, your 943 would be a starting. So it would be taking it off of the 1508 or 1.5 million down at the bottom. If you used 100,000 from the council-designated towards additional property tax relief, it would draw us down to 1.4 by the end of next year.
Then rather than make it like 390, why don't we just, I would like to see us maybe use a half million and that'll take it down to about a dime for the tax increase. What do you think?
If we bought it down another 100,000.
110,000.
Well, okay. I had the 100,000 calculator.
Okay, go ahead.
The 100,000 would be 15.39. So it'd about be 11 cents.
So that'd be 11 cents?
Mm-hmm.
Do you want me to actually add that?
I like, I like the idea of making that 390, a half million dollars, and that'll take us down to about, so our tax increase, levy increase will be a dime.
If you go, go over to the debt, long-term debt tab. There you go. And then right below the 390, just type in 100, oh, leave the 390. He wants the 390.
Wait, so I'm just changing it to 500,000 total?
Yep.
1538.
And we're at 1528, so that makes it a dime.
The, the one word of caution, again, is that this, what happens for next fiscal year as well is that we're still trying to fit the same expenses over just a smaller amount of valuation. So the thing, the thing that I would say that leads that 390,000 as a recommendation is it's stair stepping it over years. Whereas this, if we're up to 1638 next year, it's a whole dollar increase. I have no reason to believe that it'll be that right now, because I have no numbers to verify that. But that this basically, you know, the, the 1550 is really that stair step in the middle where it's an increase from this year, really preparing for what's probably a bigger increase in next year as well.
Would you scroll up to the top? So just a reminder that the 810 levy, that's the maximum we can have. So as our valuations drop, so do our dollars.
Yes.
And same thing with the emergency levy, that's capped out at 27 cents.
And, but what happens for next year would be if we need $316,000 to run transit, that number's not going to be 36 cents. That's probably going to be 50 cents or more, potentially.
So what's everybody else think?
I think you've got a good idea for the simple fact that, that as a homeowner and with vehicles, I know that everybody probably in lease in this city and nationwide got hit by insurance increases, not only on your home, but on your vehicles. And, and to add this on to the public, really gives me a sense that we're, when, and how we're into taking away from the quality of life things. You know, you can only, you can only bring people so many times and, and pretty soon, that's the thing that, that they have to give up first, is quality of life. And, and I think we have the reserves in the, as far as the council-designated money, that we can buy this down and, and if you want to leave it at a half a million, that's fine. Or if you want to buy it down to whatever. That's, and, and I, I understand the caution with the, with the, Jessica, that, that we may be faced with a lot more next year. But also saying that, we're also going to have more money. And, and that reiterates back to the public, the more they spend here, the more we have to give back to them. It's plain and simple. So I would, I would agree also that whatever we can do for the public, I think we, it's actually, it's their money.
I guess I, I, I agree that it is advantageous to assist our residents with the tax relief. But I also question against having a very large increase next year. I think sometimes you're right. If you can do 20 cents this year or the, whatever, if we, if we move up next year, it won't be as devastating as if someone says you're going to have an 80 cents increase next year or a dollar increase next year. And, and as you said, we're not really operating on any specific dollar amounts right now. But, so I might say, maybe we can buy down a little more. But I think we need to prepare people that in the future, we're most likely going to have an increase in that. And to do that in smaller increments seems to make sense to me, rather than throwing it all out there at once.
One, one thing to, just to remind you all of, that you brought up a, a good point is, without any of the 390,000 or anything, we were looking at a 66 cent increase this year with what I would say was a fairly steady tax base. And so that was 66 cents. And then the 390 got it down about 40 cents from what it's supposed to be.
The other part that I was thinking about is I saw the other day the numbers on the new bonds that the community college, they're going for 33 million, I think it is. I saw the tax rate there was going to go up a dollar and 27 cents. That's, that's why I thought if we could hold ours a little, they're going to get a dollar 27 off of them right off the bat. So that was just something that I knew about, that I, some of my thought process, not to be so hard on them. But I agree that if we have to raise them next year, we still got that million and a half dollars next year too, that if we, if we don't spend, that you got to play with. Million dollars would take the tax rate down a long ways. And still have a half million balance. So, but, but we don't know where we're going to be next year. We absolutely don't.
Well, the other huge variable is the tornado. You know, we're hoping that FEMA will reimburse us what we're submitting, but they could deny.
Right.
And until we actually know, we could be short there as well.
Yes.
You wanted a motion here, didn't you? To give you a little direction, is that?
So I'll, I'll make, I'll move that we accept option number one and use 390,000 local option sales tax. I just think it's better to, to take incremental steps. We haven't raised the rate the past three years. And it's, it's not as big a blow, of a blow than down the line. Wouldn't it be nicer to not have to raise it as much next year? Or draw down our reserve there?
There'll be a second to that?
I'll second.
We want to call for a vote on that?
If there's no other discussion, if there's no other discussion.
Any other directs, or, or discussion, public discussion?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. The 911 Commission, since that shifted out, what's that going to add to our tax bill?
This year, nothing.
This fiscal year that we're talking about, this fiscal year?
They're going to pay a dollar. It's all the, those numbers are already included in this budget.
No, the, the dollar part is for their lease space. But the 800,000 in labor that got shifted to that commission, they have to levy for.
Yes.
Okay, so what's that?
We were already levying for that, though.
In this fiscal year that we're talking about?
Yes, our, our share, our, our two-thirds. The county picked up a third and we pick up two-thirds.
I believe what you're referring to is the Marshall County Communications Commission has their own separate tax levy. I'm not sure what that is. You would need to contact the emergency management office to determine what that is.
So that's going to add to the dollar 27 that you're talking about, about the community college? And that's going to add on to our tax bill? And then we've got our, our hit here that we're, you're trying to buy down.
Yes.
And so I'm just mentioning that that's also going to show up on our tax bill.
Yeah, but Jessica, I'm trying, that, that was already budgeted by the city and the county for next year.
No.
Now, wait a minute, now wait a minute. That was already, we already had those numbers in our budget. But once they took over, we took them out of our budget and they're going to, but they're going to do it now, right?
And they are currently. That started with this current fiscal year, so we have nothing in our, our budget, what's been proposed or at all.
I understand. Yeah, that's right. Mr. Mayor, I would move to, to amend the motion and change it from 390 to 500,000 for one year.
I think probably the proper way is to, to vote on, on Bethany's motion and then.
Okay.
And then if hers doesn't go, then.
Okay.
Unless, unless Ms. Wearn would accept a, an amendment.
I think anybody can move to amend the motion and then we vote on the amendment.
I'll withdraw my motion and call for the question on her motion. Let's just vote on it and get it done.
So we need a roll call on a motion?
Wearn?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
No.
Hoop?
No.
Lamer?
No.
Martin?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
So do we have to entertain another motion?
I would move that we, we accept opt, we accept local option number one, option number one, but increasing the 390,000 to a half million dollars for one year.
A second on that?
I'll second.
Diana, do you have something you were trying to say?
Yes, sorry.
Maybe before I interrupted you? Okay. A roll call in on, on a half million dollar motion?
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wearn?
No.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
I, could I make a comment right now? Is that a, would that be in line?
Well, we're done with this one, correct? So it'd be into the.
I, I just wanted to make a few more comments. So now that you decided that, I can bring the debt service fund back to you. And then we need to go over all the grants and donation funds as well, and the capital funds. So that'd be on next Monday night's meeting. Then after that, on the last meeting in February, 2/25, that's when you'll need to finalize the budget so we can publish it. And then the public hearing will be on March 11th. And that's the day that you'll adopt the budget. So you can decrease it, but you cannot increase it at that point. And then I have to submit it to the county by March 15th.
I would, I would like to make a comment that having gone through these budgets, both personally at, at the other utility and here for 30-plus years, you sure make it easy, a lot easier than it's ever been. I can remember spending hours up here and it's, you and your staff need to, need to have a lot of praise. And Jessica, I know you were in on it too and.
And the directors.
And the directors? Do we have to give them, no. Yes, it's, I think, I think, I think it's because of the quality of our staff and stuff that we can do this, this quick. And I really appreciate the, all the work and time you guys put in doing this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So is there any public comments? On something that's not on the agenda? Not seeing any, then I would call for an adjournment?
You just get to adjourn.
Stand adjourned.
I do?
Yep.
We are adjourned.
Take the hammer.